I'm going to call the June 25 meeting of the SBU planning committee to order if it's standing and we can see if you can apply.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Span.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
And noting both Commissioners Romo and McNair are absent.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 28. Second.
Wyler is first.
Oh, sorry.
And that should be, oh, sorry guys. Five yeses, go hearing.
Hey, do we have any communication?
No written communications or favor future neighborhood meetings to report.
Okay, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about something that's not on the agenda tonight? We've seen none, we'll go right to public hearings. Are we going to continue this first item?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair Span. The first item is an update to the work of the facility regulations and companion guidelines. As part of the process, staff reached out to the carrier industry to solicit feedback about their approach. And based on that feedback, staff did best to work with the industry and work on a more amenable approach and at least address their concerns. So staff is recommending that the commission vote to continue to a date uncertain, likely to be returning in July or August.
Hey, does somebody want to make a motion to continue this item two and up? All vote?
Now you vote.
Okay. Okay, we have five yes votes, so we'll continue AC 190001 to an update uncertain. Okay, G2 is a zoning code land use study, AC 18-0006.
Thank you, Chairman Chair Mike Spillman, Assistant Planning Director. This item is a continued discussion about the zoning code and land use study. For some background information about the overall program, City Council bracketed the focus study to look at specific non-residential land uses. A year ago, City Council meeting on March 20th of this year, staff presented a status update. City Council confirmed the overall approach to the study and made sure it was on track on May 28th, just two months ago. The planning commission did a whole public hearing to consider all the items excepting tobacco store regulations. At that particular meeting, the commission wanted to have a continued discussion on thrift stores in the downtown area. So this June 25 meeting is essentially an opportunity to return and conclude that work and complete this zoning code land use study recommendations that the council. Part of the basis for completing the study is an opportunity for the city to evaluate non-residential land uses, considering the oversaturation of objectionable land use, address land use compatibility, monitor the effectiveness of existing zoning code regulations, and consider how the code can be used as a tool to protect public safety and welfare of the community, which includes both residence, commercial areas, and other interested community members. The opportunity resulted in a series of use categories that were identified at the onset of the work program of the City Council. Majority of those uses were included in the main meeting report to the planning commission, in which planning commission resolution 2019-10 was adopted. The exception, which is listed on the right of the screen, those are included in tonight's discussion. One is tobacco smoking in vaping stores, and then continued discussion of thrift stores in the downtown area, in particular the CCU Center City Urban District, Sub District of the downtown specific one. As presented on May 28th to the planning commission and adopted by our resolution, new definitions were created for thrift stores, pawn shops, consignment stores, and secondhand stores. The requirement of a conditional use permit was applied citywide. Currently, the use is prohibited in the downtown area. New requirements for collection sorting, enclosed activities, property maintenance, and storefront appearance were also included in that planning commission resolution. The consensus of the commission was to bring back the discussion on different regulatory approaches to address thrift stores in the subarea of downtown and present a recommendation. What embodied the planning commission resolution has an advisory recommendation of the planning commission to the City Council, it has not been presented yet. So anything that is discussed tonight can be folded into a recommendation to the City Council when that recommendation is made. So as provided in the staff report, there are several regulatory options available. One includes status quo, continuing the prohibition of the use in the downtown area, in particular the Center City Urban Sub District. One is imposing a minimum lot size requirement, another is minimum building size requirement. The other is looking at spatial separation between similar uses and allows us to require a conditional use permit or to authorize the use by permitting by way. The recommendation has suggested both in the staff report and the company resolution is to require conditional use permits for thrift stores specifically in the Center City Urban Sub District of the downtown specific one, and also require minimum building size of 15,000 square feet. That particular store footage would accommodate the proposed request of a main speaker that evening for the particular site within consideration. But it would also allow other opportunities within that subarea. Requiring conditional use permit would require a going before some sort of decision body. So if there's any building or store footage added, it would be presented to the planning commission. If they're occupying the existing footprint of a building, it would be presented to the zoning manager. The other thing included in the staff report and resolution is a recommendation to regulate and prohibit tobacco product stores citywide. This would be based on the principles and findings of the research that is included in the staff report for safer acquisition and open code for everything included in that. The definition category of tobacco retailers and cigarette and vape shops will align existing Minnesota Code definitions, which may be refined as this amendment to the Minnesota Code is brought forward to the City Council. It's envisioned that it will be concurrently presented through tobacco retail license, which is under the Chapter 16 and 22A of the Minnesota Code, and then the changes provided within the zoning code to be subtitled today for us. But the idea is to prohibit tobacco product stores, which would then include retailers and these cigarettes and vaping shops. Staff presentation is trying to close, the recommendation is to approve the planning commission resolution 2019-1111 for the findings presented in the staff report resolution, which would require conditional use permits in the Center City Urban Sub Area of the downtown specific one for thrift stores and for other tobacco stores citywide. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, I guess I just have a couple of quick things I want to clarify. So tobacco products per set, just based on that, the percentage of sales that are tobacco related, do they mean like a dedicated smoke shop kind of thing?
Yes, there are two ways and methods to retail urban tobacco related products or vaping products. One is as a principal land use, so tobacco store, and the other is as an accessory components with existing retailer. So those would be the gas stations, the grocery retailers, and any other general retailer that carries those types of products as incidental or ancillary to it. The proposed recommendation to prohibit tobacco related product sales only applies to the principal land use. So tobacco vending stores or e-cigarette or vaping stores. The incidental accessory you sell at grocery stores or gas stations would be allowed to continue as a current use under the recommendation.
Back on the tobacco issue. I saw in the staff report there was discussion about requiring a license, a special license for anybody that wants to sell tobacco type products. Is that part of this recommendation or article doing this evening?
It is not part of the discussion this evening. When council was presented with the preliminary recommendations a couple of months ago, the idea was eraduced. And so council gave direction for staff to begin working on that tobacco retail license. We are continuing to work on that tobacco retail license and will be presented directly to City Council and ideally at the same time as planning commission's recommendation on the prohibition to outsourced citywide. So it is not a part of tonight's discussion?
So that discussion will bypass planning commission?
Correct, yes.
Big one. And why is that, just because it came at as a direction from City Council?
At part, the authority of the planning commission as advisory role is over the zoning code. And so these are minutes of Minnesota, which is technically outside of the planning commission.
Right, okay, thank you.
Any other questions to add? Just one comment, I'd really like it done with the thrift stores. If we can apply all of those except for the prohibition, that would be great. At this time, I've got some speakers up here, I'm going to argue a little in time to get to the microphone and state your name and the address. And please limit your comments to three minutes.
Yep, several.
Forgive me if I don't get your name quite right. Haley Giuffrida?
Good evening, my name is Haley Giuffrida and I'm with Vista Community Clinic's Tobacco Control Program. So there's over 200 localities nationwide and over 30 cities and counties in California who have done some sort of flavored tobacco ban, e-cigarette sale ban, or a menthol cigarette ban. And just today, San Francisco decided to ban all electronic cigarettes from their city. It's really wonderful to see that this is even a conversation in Escondido. These things are sneaky. They look sleek, they're very small, kids are using them all over school. If it has a tobacco product like Juul, it contains as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. The chemicals that create the flavors have been known to have fungus in them, have been known to cause chronic lung issues, and that these devices can also hold marijuana and a lot of other drugs in them as well. Any vaporizer can't hold any of these drugs. And we're seeing all of these prevalent all over schools. So I want to thank Escondido for, you know, even having these conversations about potentially limiting the access to these because addiction is real and these kids are seeing them everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Decheck?
Good evening, my name is Mary Ann Diop, I'm resident of Escondido. And I also work for an organization called Education Compact. And we run the juvenile diversion program for the Escondido Police Department. And we are very happy to hear that the commission is considering this policy. E-cigarettes, vaping devices are a huge problem for our youth in Escondido. In fact, we consider it a public health crisis. Kids are using these vaping devices not only for tobacco, but for marijuana. Kids are using them on campus, they're smoking in class because you can't detect the smell from these devices. Usually, you can smell someone who's using marijuana, it has a very strong odor. When used in one of these e-cigarettes, there's no odor. So kids that are using on campus are arrested in the city of Escondido and they go through the juvenile diversion program. Since 2015, arrests for kids on campus using these e-cigarettes has increased 311 percent. 67 percent of those kids using these marijuana on campus are failing school, are credit deficient. 63 percent have a problem with attendance. This is why we're calling it a public health crisis, because the kids are literally going to be not getting their high school diploma, dropping out of school, not to mention all of the problems that are associated with early drug use in these high concentrates of marijuana that they're using in these e-cigarettes. The only other, the only thing that I would caution and ask to think about is that in the language, we talk about tobacco products and tobacco, tobacco products. We went through this before with, when the police department tried to close down some of these smoke shops that were selling drug paraphernalia, pipes and things like that. The owners told the police department, oh, no, no, these are tobacco products. These are not drug, they're not used for drugs. Well, now that marijuana is legalized in the state of California, I am concerned that with the language that says tobacco products, that some of the retailers will say, oh, no, no, these are marijuana products. And marijuana is legal. And so we may be creating a problem again just by language. So I don't know if including drug paraphernalia would be possible in that. But I would say that this is a great policy, we fully support it, and you would be doing a great service to us and the community that are trying to keep kids drug free. Thank you.
Thank you. Forgive me, Yur Linden Montiel?
Good evening, my name is Yuradine Montiel and I am a resident of Escondido. I live in Menrich Road. And I work for the public health community. I want to thank the city for considering not allowing more smoke vape shops in the city. I support the need to protect youth in our community and create a family friendly atmosphere in Escondido. The less exposure our youth have to new smoke vape shops, the less likely it's for them to go get them or buy them. I'm really concerned about, I'm an older sister of three teens and I'm concerned about their health, especially if one of them that's in middle school and he's only in sixth grade comes home and shares with me that his schoolmates are smoking and using these vape machines. So I'm in favor to not bring any more new shops. So please consider all of our youth out there, thank you.
Thank you. Linda Barber?
Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Linda Barber. I work for the American Cancer Society, Cancer Action Network. I'm here today just to reinforce that we really do think this is a good idea. Tobacco use rates are affected by the density of retailers in an area and youths are really vulnerable to that. And the availability of tobacco products can definitely create more access and then more use. But a study that just came out yesterday through JAMA points out that vape and tobacco stores are very bad actors in terms of their sales to, their illegal sales. The study did, analyzed over 1,200 stores and found that the vape stores had the highest, or the vape and tobacco product stores had the highest rates of illegal sales across California. So removing them from the system is a great way to reduce illegal sales to minors. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Knutson?
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Gina Knutson and I'm a program manager for Vista Community Clinic and I've also been a resident here in Escondido for the last 20 years. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the planning commission for your vision and leadership with addressing this issue to create a safer environment for the youth in our cities, or in Escondido, by not allowing more vape, cigarette, and smoke shops in the city. E-cigarette use among youth, particularly the Juul product, continues to skyrocket. And by limiting these types of businesses, Escondido can further reduce youth access to tobacco products and the potential for lifelong addiction to nicotine. There's also a debate within the public health community whether these devices, e-cigarettes, are helping adult smokers transition from traditional tobacco to maybe a safer product. But I want to let you know that science is just not bearing that out. And there's, there was a quote last week from a researcher from UC San Francisco talking about the dangers of promoting this more toward youth. So for every smoker who quits using e-cigarettes, or about 80 youth who start using e-cigarettes, and many of these eventually move on to combustible cigarettes. So I just want to thank the city for the leadership in prohibiting more of the smoke shops. Thank you.
Thank you. David Cubley?
Good evening, I'm David Cubley, I'm with the community business and I wanted to thank you for your, during the meeting last, on May 28th, for your guidance, working with Mr. Trump in trying to assist us. There's one comment I have. On the, in the May 28th report, there were some additional standards and guidelines that were laid out by staff. One of those was to limit the production area to 30 percent of the area. And our model of 40 percent is what we like to see. So the reason is that there's fewer trucks on the road, you don't have to service the site twice as often to be able to bring a whole unit out. So I'd like to respectfully request that you consider maybe modifying that part if you are supportive of this idea to create the opportunity that CCU's own. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I've got a quick question. What section was that, that you were quoting? Because I just happened to miss it and so.
Section, I think it's section nine. And it's on page, well, this particular reference is on page 17.
Through the, through the chair if I may, this is part of the May 28 staff report in the planning commission resolution 2019-10. So it's not included in the packet, I believe, before you.
Thank you.
I've got a quick question as well, if I may. The 40 percent, what is that area called again, the sorting area?
Processing area.
Processing area. Is that screened from the retail floor?
Yes.
It is?
Yes.
Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on this matter that hasn't yet? See none, propose a public hearing and ask for mission discussion?
I have one, one question for staff, and it was based on a comment that one of the speakers brought up. Did staff take into consideration drug paraphernalia sales as a part of this review product, or review process on tobacco?
We did, and staff has been working very closely with the police department regarding enforcement of the Public Health Safety Code, which has the primary regulation and authority over those types of sales and some preliminary criteria that needs to be satisfied. It's envisioned that that type of set of regulations would be rolled into that tobacco retail license discussion with the City Council. So it is separate from the land use regulation, recommendation presented this evening. So through the tobacco retail licensing program, whether any drug paraphernalia is sold on site, it would be essentially enforced through that licensing program. So any criteria that was developed to distinguish between e-cigarette paraphernalia sales used for that purpose or used for the cannabis or other contraband would be a good enforcement mechanism for that. So the Attorney's Office and the Police Department and the Planning Department are working through the tobacco retail license to make sure that what is developed can enable effective enforcement. Because often what is being experienced in the community is the operators of those businesses will be selling things that are marked for display for nicotine or e-cigarette use, when in fact they're also promoting it for other activities. And so the tobacco retail licensing program would probably be the most effective way to give the city some sort of control of that. The city's still working involving what that would look like, embedding it from a legal process. But it's not part of the amendment package that's presented to the planning commission.
Okay, thank you. I just have some comments. I'm in support of restrictions that are being, being placed on the tobacco sales. I think that, you know, I, I'm not in favor of total prohibition. I think that there still needs to be certain things that are, if they're legal, then they're legal and we have to enforce the laws that are on the books that prohibit certain sales to, you know, younger people. But I don't think that we need to be helping with the proliferation by allowing for a lot of these stores to be all over Escondido. So I support the change. Regarding the thrift stores, I would like to see a, at least one item added to the restriction. And that would be that any thrift store that came in meet the criteria that was set out by staff, but also be a nonprofit, you know, 501(c)(3) type of organization. But other than that, I think staff did a really good job in laying all this out for us and I appreciate your time.
Through the chair, if I, if I may respond to this in the previous clarification on the location of the provision of store, store footage area allocations. So as part of the planning commission resolution that has been adopted, the definition included therein defines it as a retail establishment or nonprofit organization, primarily engaged in selling and use merchandise which is benefited through bulk purchases or through donations or gifts, where the donor receives no value upon the sale of such merchandise, where the use is designed to sell donated merchandise at a below, a price below reasonable market value. The secondhand sale of guns, appliances, mattresses, or other vehicles are prohibited under this classification. This does, use does not include establishments which sell used merchandise on consignment. So as part of the package that had already been considered, there are clear differentiations between thrift shop, other secondhand stores, consignment shops, and pawn shops. So there is emphasis on it being. So there is emphasis on it being some sort of establishment or nonprofit organization that's kind of handling donated merchandise and selling it below market value. And to the point that was made earlier about the location of what the speaker was referring to, that also was part of that resolution that was adopted. And this applies to all consignment shops, secondhand stores, and thrift shops. Pawn shops were recommended to be prohibited as part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission. But the particular provision is number two and highlighted on the screen. No more than 30% of the floor area should be utilized for receiving, sorting, and storage of donated trade goods. At the time of the development of this ordinance, it was presumed that there would be no limitations on these store footages allowed for these types of businesses and retailers. Certainly, when considering in the center city urban area of the downtown specific area, having a minimum square foot building size of 15,000 square feet would obviously allow a significant area of retailing and sorting or storage of goods. And if that number was proposed to be 40%, it probably wouldn't substantially change the spirit of that operation or its public-facing operation. I think there might be some concerns if there is a blanket change throughout the universe of potential thrift shops that may operate in a smaller size operation. It might turn into more of a sorting and storage facility rather than a retailing facility. So there probably should be some consideration about a limitation of its relationship to the overall building's store footage size. Should the commission be interested in changing the provision to 30% or 40%? But overall, are there going to be any concerns with what the speaker raised to put that particular area in the center city or district?
So we could add a provision, keeping this 30%, and then adding one more that says for buildings over 15,000 square feet, you would be allowed to do 40% sorting?
Absolutely.
If the commission so chose to go that direction.
Correct. And under the category in which that provision or criteria is listed, it would apply to all consignment shops, secondhand stores, and thrift shops.
The 30%?
Most of the sorting and storage would be probably applicable to thrift shops instead of herb or secondhand stores, especially with the storage. But your approach seems reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
So just to clarify that, if we do go to the 40% on buildings at 15,000 square feet, that would be throughout the city, not...
If it was included within this section, there's also opportunities to look at a specific plan. In particular, on page 17 of the staff report, this is the first page of Exhibit B, which annotates the proposed changes to the codes. There is a footnote that is added to the thrift shop land use authorization for conditioning these permits, the footnote 14, added to say you shall have a minimum building floor area of 15,000 square feet. Theoretically, the commission could recommend adding the additional percentage limitation in that section, so it only applies to the center city urban district as currently proposed to be codified and do not apply elsewhere throughout the city.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry. So would that be the appropriate location to add the... Oh, I was thinking of something. Okay. No, I think that covers it for me then.
All right. Well, through the chair, if I may. I think I can understand where you might think of potentially going. I guess an issue may arise if this particular business establishment does not locate in the center city urban sub-district, and it does want to locate elsewhere throughout the city. Then it would be limited to the 30% rather than the 40%, which would be maintained for that specific plan, if that's the location of the criteria.
Any other comments? Discussion?
A question in regard to the tobacco sales. I hear from the speakers that it's, it seems like the understanding of what we're doing is no more stores or storefronts that sell this type of merchandise? Or we actually closing down those that are also already here?
For those stores that have a duly issued zoning permit clearance in operation, those would be considered non-conforming land use activities and would be allowed to continue to operate until the use is discontinued or abated. But we would not be allowing new operators to come into new locations in the city.
Thank you. And in regard to the thrift stores, I think it would be well-advised, maybe for us, or for me at least, to hear where it may be more appropriate to make the change in regard to the 30 to the 40%, which is, would be more beneficial for our city in regard to that, because I think the request that we made last, on our last meeting certainly probably deserves attention to this need for this change. So I would appreciate having some kind of clarity as to where we're going there.
Okay. So from staff's standpoint, the recommendation would probably be to modify the previous recommendation made by the Planning Commission for section 33, 1127a2, and amend the statement as currently shown to say that for the exceptions for buildings that are rated at 15,000 square feet, no more than 40% of the floor area can be devoted to the same purpose of receiving, sorting, and storage. So it is applicable citywide, but it's limited to those larger businesses, so that the outward facing presence of the storefronts still has that retail connection to the customers' influence. So that would be my recommendation, kind of thinking about, providing my suggestion.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Couple of comments and maybe a clarifier to the issue of the thrift stores. Since it was Goodwill that came before us at our last meeting, I guess that's what we're focused on. I'm wondering, I should probably know this, but is Goodwill a 501(c)(3)? And the location that Goodwill's interested in that is coming up in, I guess, then and now, is that a 15,000 square foot structure?
Almost 18,000.
And then, okay, so those are my questions about that. A quick comment about the tobacco issue. You know, I am not at all proud to be a 37-year smoker, and I smoke two packs a day. But I think that when I started smoking at 15 years old, I thought I would, but you know, mine was a mature little mind. And I wish, if I knew then what I know now, obviously I wouldn't have picked him up. And like Commissioner Wyler, I'm definitely, you know, in favor of personal choice and adult decisions. I believe in that. And I think that's important. But I think there's something, there could be something a little more insidious here that I see, when I see what I believe to be a muck making it a state of fact, but when I see younger or questionable minds being targeted who are not yet, who don't have the faculties to make adult decisions, and the repercussion of that type of decision can last a lifetime. And I'm going to tell you that it can. I'm often reminded of Mark Twain, who said, "A quick season for the thousands." And so it's a really tough nut to break that hat. And, you know, I certainly don't mind consenting adults doing, you know, what they do. I have views on marijuana, that kind of thing, but, you know, if it's legal. But again, I think when, I think I've gotten education from the group here, especially about I did not understand the odorless nature. I did not understand that this was fruity flavors. And as an adult, that would appeal to my palate, but I can certainly see how it might to a child. And I think that that first step, well, it would mean. And so I think, yeah, absolutely, I support grid restrictions on this, on that, this sort of product, I'm using that term loosely, or barriers or impediments that would logically block a child from obtaining those. And, you know, because of the consequences, I think the consequences of that that should last a lifetime. And so, yeah, I would be in favor of that. Sorry for the diatribe, but yeah, those are...
I just have one comment. After the presentation that y'all made at the One Neighborhood Meeting really opened my eyes to the way a particular product is marketed, Juul. Every time I hear that ad now, I think, what a bunch of lies. I mean, it is so full of nicotine, so easy to conceal. When I went to high school, everybody knew who was smoking because they had cigarettes in their sleeves, they had it behind their ear, I mean, the smoke was coming out of their mouths. But now they can sit in class and do that, nobody even knows it. Everybody's going to reap the effect of that, that same nicotine that's coming out is the same as secondhand smokes. Whatever we can do to curtail that, I'm almost more in favor of regular cigarette chops because you know who's doing it, you can have a little bit better control on it. But the vaping that people think is absolutely harmless is, like you said, it's, once you start, nobody's quitting cigarettes to go to vaping either. That's just my thoughts. I'm also open for a properly worded...
Motion.
I can go ahead and make a motion. A move that we approve, AZ 180006, as presented by staff, with one additional change to section 33-1127a2, to add the provision that allows for 40%, I guess it's preparation area, for buildings over 15,000 square feet.
Okay. Can we vote on that?
Yeah.
Five yes votes. So it passes that AZ 180006 with the addition of the 40% on 15,000 square foot buildings Item G3, Omnibus Code Cleanup, AZ 19-0003.
Thank you, Chair. Mike Strong, Assistant Planning Director, CDS. This is a part of an annual batch improvement. This planning department sponsored about two years ago, so this is the third iteration. And it gives opportunity for us to, in a single code batch cleanup, combine different areas of the edits that are necessary to address your recent changes in state law interpretations stateside or just provide greater clarification to a user which could be administered by city staff for code enforcement, it could be utilized by decision makers including the Planning Commission, and also the greater public, which uses only code to understand the multiple rights that they can and cannot have under property. This annual 2019 batch of code changes includes Articles 1, 6, 9, 16, 26, 39, 56, 61, 65, 67, 70, and 73. There is a clear error of the resolution and the agenda title that there would be a companion amendment to chapter 32, which is the subdivision ordinance. That is not included in a single batch in a batch program that was presented in the studio. Most of these suggested amendments are self-explanatory, provided in Exhibit B. Those, again, do include the error in order to address clarifications, code reference I R C's, or any of these. And there are a few that are some explanation, and we'd like to invite some discussion from the commission. One is the changes to the use table to allow horse tables as a commercial use. The other is the way that the section changes to the use table to allow horse tables as an accessory use. This is something that our existing zone code has signed. Yet we all know that there are plenty of horse tables in the city of Escondido. One other thing that is lacking within the zoning code is strict guidance on the location of those enclosures, which will be discussed in Article 9, where it says. Another item featured within Article 6 suggested for edit and clarification is section 33-100. That changes the setback for multifamily development in the hardcore and R5 zones. Currently, the first story and second story needs to have a five-foot setback from parking level, but the third story needs to have a 10-foot setback from parking level. So there are instances with very small lot infill development that are already constrained by the criteria of size of the lot in terms of their roll width, that having a drive aisle to service the units or parking garages would then further constrain the remaining availability for capital space. And so the 10-foot setback on the third story above the garage is a little bit constraining us in, and constrain housing development. So we are recommending the removal of that for only the small lot developments, and that is to facilitate and achieve the indices that were issued for those multifamily zone Article 9 is the animal overlay zone. This is a specific overlay applied to residential estate and residential agricultural zones. Currently within, as codified, there are some criteria and some enclosure detail. The idea is to expand on that criteria to provide greater protection and land use compatibility concerning car owners or the non-owner of those set animals. The other noticeable change, which actually applies to Article 6, is adding new criteria for enclosures at that point and refer to the enclosure detail in Article 9. Article 9 is a place in zoning code that has enclosure setback information for animal enclosures. So the proposed edits are to make sure they also apply to areas that are not someone to go for. So any residential state, residential act, or cultural, or even residential family or rodent would also have to provide those setbacks to make sure they're off properly and not disruptive to surrounding property owners. Article 39 is parking. There is recommended change to give some onsite parking flexibility for existing developments that need to comply with new development standards or new standards that are imposed at the state level. A great example, and that's already been a challenge for interpretation, is the accessibility and visibility act requirements, ADA requirements. When you retrofit existing car space or car stall space, the ADA requirements are a little bit larger than in this standard set for loading and unloading areas. And so when those are red... When those are red... You're essentially locating two spaces to accommodate. The same can be said for changes, recent changes, the trash enclosure problems to accommodate new organic recycling, which would effectively add another bend to all commercial development and soon be imposed on some residential areas as well. So that would mean that there's some trash enclosures that may happen to be larger if they're located in an area that has a seat parking and would encroach into existing space. And lastly, would be infrastructure for EV charging stations to accommodate a company, deployment of those services to the community. So the changes are recommended by law enforcement and administrative flexibility in allowing a very wider flexibility to reduce parking to accommodate those instances. a very wider flexibility to reduce parking to accommodate those instances, those instances of them. The last one, Article seventy-three, is for outdoor display. That is to allow vending machines, guys, or retail vending machines, and provides some criteria towards them to be located in outdoor topic commercial areas. The environmental status of the projects is covered by the general presumption of no impact on the environment. And the conclusion is to recommend, planning commission recommends the council approval on Omnibus as a step as a level of answer to the questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have a question?
On the Article nine, we're looking at page sixteen of the staff report, where we have the animal enclosure setback requirements. I see that we have side yard and rear yard, but no front yard. Was it intentional or oversight to leave that off? Or are there other sections of code that would address, you know, animal structures in the front yard? It's not likely that it would happen, but it could.
It could, certainly. So there are some underlying some setback requirements in the front yard that would prohibit accessory structures in the front yard. So there is an underlying compliance setback, hundred fifteen or twenty feet. So they would have to be outside of that area, average of that. These animal enclosure requirements are in addition to that, which may further separate it. But I do see to the point of what you're identifying as a potential interpretation issue. So it might be wise to include enclosures into the...
The underlying, okay. And then I have one other question on page twenty. At the very top, it says, "Major conditional use permit, unbundling of any amount of parking or other means to separate the cost to rent a parking space from the cost of renting an apartment condo." Could you help me understand exactly the intent of that?
Yeah, unbundling is a practice of housing developers to try to capture transportation demand management practices. Often unbundling the price of a parking space from the rental unit provides a opportunity of choice to that renter, whether or not they would forego an extra car or pay the extra space for the store to be able. So it is an emerging development control mechanism to try to reduce the amount of parking required on our property. So typically, those would probably be reviewed through a planning development process and considered today, and something that would present as a money condition, and ultimately approved by the city council. But what we're finding is that there are, have been some received complaints that existing parking complexes are now converting their existing parking spaces to unbundle the rental space for those parking spaces from the rental unit. And it's creating a lot of problems. So this would provide a mechanism to at least consider that type of request. The conditional use permit seems appropriate because there can be certain limitations imposed by the planning commission in essence, which would be authorized by the consider such requests. But also to have some sort of monitoring and enforcement should things get out of hand or not achieve what was envisioned with that use permit, it can be revoked and rescinded through a notice of public hearing. So the agencies that I'm aware of that have authorized unbundling as something separately covered by the code tend to be up in the Bay Area. That's where it's most prevalent. But I believe the city of San Diego has recently adopted something similar. And there are other cities in the San Diego region that are also kind of moving in this direction. So it's not a foreign concept, it's just it is something that is of interest to an existing property or a developer that there's some opportunity to kind of control how it's unbundled and done in a manner that doesn't impact surrounding property and there's a risk of forced people to park on the street, which likely is completely happening in these scenarios. So a conditional use permit would be recommended, you know, personally for the planning commission instance.
So how is this, I mean, how does this actually work? You know, because I've seen the parking complexes and I see half the parking lot is empty, but everybody's parked all over the streets, and I get what's happening, I understand. So is this, has it worked from the city's enforcement side, or is there any way that the city could go to the apartment complex and say, "Hey, are you guys, you know, charging less rent if somebody parks on the street?" Yeah. I'm just trying to get a better understanding of what our role, what the city's role is.
The basis for new development, so there's going to be two ways to define this, new development and existing development.
I get it for the new development. Okay. I got that side.
So for existing development, it's a little bit trickier because a lot of the existing leases are in effect for the apartment renters, right? So it would have to be a phased mechanism where as a unit space becomes available, there would have to be some sort of analysis about the number of parking spaces that are in use or the demand of overall apartment complex, which again would be a consideration of the planning commission, so you can consider that type of request. So there would have to be some sort of parking study, companion document to support the request. But as the phase release of the documented units, when the renter, prospective renter goes to rent the unit, there would be some sort of inventory of building spaces and some sort of purchasing, purchasing program established where there is either a fixed rate for that unit or there's like a silent option for a building space. I'm not quite sure how it applies to existing unit developments in that sense. But overall, the intent is to reduce the amount of demand for the parking within a new or existing development in the...
White paper.
Cities that have evaluated show between a five percent and fifteen percent of elasticity of the area.
Meaning?
That it does attract lower cost for renter stay areas where they already don't have a car and can afford that space, extra parking space. But clearly, if there's a parking issue already within a development, it's going to be a very difficult, a difficult case to be made to support unbundling that option. But currently, our code is completely silent on the issue. We've experienced a couple of parking complexes trying to transition to that. So this provides some sort of a reference point for the city to show that there needs to be a approval, some authorized process for them to do that. So in the end, this would help probably prevent a lot of the unauthorized unbundling that we're experiencing in our community and establish a publicly vetted process to consider it in existing apartments in that direction.
Thank you for helping me understand that. I appreciate it. I have another question.
I'd have a couple of questions. How exactly did the animal overlay zone come into effect? I mean, what was the cause of having to come up with all of the codification and the...
I'm not quite certain. My guess is that at some point, it was acknowledged that there were existing parks and facilities that housed animals. And so there was some probably effort on staff in the city at that point to acknowledge that there was a difference between those facilities and other traditional home or estate blocks. So several regulations were applied specifically to those areas, and as new properties want to expand the intensity of animal keeping on their property, there's a mechanism for them to apply the overlay zoning designation to their properties, which would then be considered for planning mission and city council. So the overlay zone is essentially the zoning regulation, it's an affix that would be applied to the property, but anyone that would be eligible for it could apply for zone change technically to apply that overlay to their property.
So this is not going to be, have an effect on average people that have chickens?
No. So the effort on staffs in terms of including this in the Omnibus was to acknowledge the deficiency of the existing code and being silent on animal enclosures, and then acknowledge that we do have some regulations for it elsewhere, and to be able to refer to that enclosure information, and then at the same time strengthening it a little bit to reduce the lanes compatibility that a lot of the code enforcement cases are currently experiencing. But in the overlay zone, the quantities of the animals permitted are greatly higher than those in other estate zones, and so that is why there needs to be a separate differentiation maintained between the two.
That answers my question. Thank you.
And as part of the staff report, it is recommended that we do return at some point to kind of go through the quantities permitted by the zone. That would probably occur at future meeting day later this year, not beginning the next.
Yeah, I don't think anybody was on the commission back when we first had, when the applicant wanted to have chickens, and it was brought out, we were the only city, I think, in the county that didn't allow chickens, and the misinformation that was spread about how every egg will hatch, people had no idea you had to have rooster to have chicks. And I mean, we were going to have chickens running all over the streets. It was just absolutely unbelievable. Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, staff?
Just real quick on that animal overlay. I understand everything right down to number five, where it says, "Dust and odor from the animal enclosure shall not create a nuisance or a hazard to adjoining properties." Number four states, "The manure management must be cleaned daily and it must be into a secure area." But let's face it, if you have a animal enclosure or any kind of animal or any kind of field, you're going to have dust as you would have dust whether or not the animal is there or not. And on top of that, you put enough manure into a covered structure, I might tell a thing or two about this, and it gets hot here, you're going to have an odor no matter what, and it may be more sensitive to James than it is to me or anybody else around the area. So what's to say, what creates a nuisance or not?
Yeah, well, the easy answer is that the code is currently silent on any of those compatibility issues. And so the introduction of anything would be to the betterment of the neighbors surrounding these types of properties. Number four does seem to be have objective and clear direction on how things should be managed on the property. Number five seems to be a little bit more subjective. And so with that concern, it may make sense to eliminate that item because most of the odors that do come from animal keeping is the storage of manure or lack thereof. So number four may be adequate to kind of thoroughly cover most of the concerns that will be expressed by most residents or neighbors of animal keeping. So I recommend eliminating number five.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, does anybody in the audience wish to speak about this? Seat none, public hearing is closed, and discussion or motion? Properly worded motion?
I'll make a motion to pass AZ one-nine dash zero zero three, Omnibus Code Cleanup. Like, if we couldn't get number five struck on section thirty-three one four-four, animal enclosure.
And so proper way when a motion is being made, can we have discussion before it's seconded and voted upon?
Typically.
I just want clarification because I've got some things that I would like to add, and so...
Okay, go ahead.
And so I'm kind of asking for clarification, proper way to go about this.
Are you looking to do more with the motion than just strike the one?
Yes, yes.
Would you like to draw your motion just temporarily?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The only thing I wanted to add was on the animal enclosure, section three-three one four-five, just to add a number three, the front yard setback will follow the underlying zone. It's just a clarification, so there's no confusion. So that was the only addition.
Okay. Any other?
The addition of number three, front yard, to section thirty-three dash one four-five.
Okay, I understand exactly what you're saying. Does everybody else understand it? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, five yes votes, so it passes with the two changes that we've made, AZ nineteen zero 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 three, Omnibus Code Cleanup, exception of number four for the animal enclosure and the front setbacks to meet the proper zoning, existing zoning. We have an attorney in business, oral communication. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about this? No? Any commissioners' comments?
No, the only comment I have is, "Thank you, Mr. Strong. Well done on all of this. This was a lot of work. Really appreciate you taking the time to come back with this and recommendations on the thrift store issue. It was extremely helpful." So thank you.
It was. Very well done. Encapsulated it with all of our thoughts.
Second.
And I had just one comment, it has nothing to do with the planning, but you can pass it on, the crews that have been trimming the trees, everything, I've seen they've been really good, very, I was surprised how efficient they were, and the trees really do look good. Right? There are no other comments?
There will not be a meeting on the...